And we will wait while people say that they got it and have a chance to get on. We're all looking forward to starting this conversation. It feels like it's been a long time coming. So, good afternoon. My name is Petra Silton. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Education for Thrive, the Alliance of Nonprofits for San Mateo County. Welcome to Thrive and Foster City Chamber Cares Initiatives Candidate Forum for the Board of Supervisors District Two, which represents Foster City, San Mateo, and parts of Belmont. I'd like to start with a land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that our work takes place on the ancestral unceded land of the Roma Tasha Olani. Before we start, just a few reminders about voting. This is a little confusing because it's called a primary election. But in this Board of Supervisors race, as with any county level race, if any one candidate receives more than 50% of the vote, the race is decided in June, not November. Voting starts on May 9th. You can go to any vote center in the county to vote in person, register or re-register, get language or accessibility assistance, or drop off your ballot. You can also put your ballot in any mailbox. Postage is paid. And don't worry about going to a vote center just to get your I Voted stickers because we all know that we love the I Voted stickers, but those will come with your ballot in the mail. It's an honor system. Don't wear it until you vote. But you will get that. The last day to vote is June 7. Go to smcvote.org for more details. A little bit about Thrive Alliance. Thrive is a trusted network of over 200 nonprofit organizations, government entities, foundations, businesses, and community leaders with a shared commitment to strengthening the nonprofit sector, thereby improving the quality of life in San Mateo County. Thrive unites the voice and influence of nonprofits, helps build the capacity, and enables cross-sector collaboration. We're honored to be hosting this discussion in association with the Foster City Chamber Cares Initiative. In the early days of the pandemic, I got a call from Bart Charlo, the CEO of Samaritan House, telling me that Thrive should join the Chamber Cares Initiative. My first thought was more meetings. And my next one was they meet at 8:00 AM. But as usual, Bart was right, and the relationships we've built and the good that we've been able to do in the community during this really difficult time because of the Chamber Cares Initiative has been really important, and I'm grateful for the opportunity that Thrive had to be a part of it. And now I'm grateful that we're able to take this time for our candidates to get to know us and for us to get to know them. Thrive is a nonpartisan and non endorsing organization. The purpose of this forum is to give all the candidates running to represent District Two the opportunity to introduce themselves to the voters, present their positions on the most pressing issues for nonprofits and for their communities. Thrive values voter engagement, voter turnout, and this is the one of many ways Thrive encourages greater civic participation. We've invited you, we're inviting you to join other candidate forums or to listen to the recordings of the ones that have already passed at thrivealliance.org. This event will be recorded and will be available on Thrive's YouTube channel and on our website, as well as on the Foster City Chamber website. The format for this afternoon's forum is as follows. Each candidate will start with a two-minute introduction, and then we'll have two minutes to answer the questions and end with a two-minute closing. If they don't use the two minutes, we will take that time back to continue for other conversation. Our panelists are all members of the Chamber Cares Initiative, and they will be asking the questions. For this webinar, the chat function has been disabled. We're not taking questions from the audience, but you can use the Q and A function if you have any technical issues. But please refrain from using it to comment on any candidates or their positions or for making any endorsements in keeping with the nonpartisan nature of this event. At this time, I'd like to hand this over to Sam Hindi, Foster City Council Member and a great friend to the Foster City Chamber Cares Initiative.
Thank you, Petra, and thank you specifically for the land acknowledgement. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the District Two Board of Supervisors Candidate Forum. My name is Sam Hindi. I'm a council member here at Foster City. I'm also the liaison to the Foster City Chamber of Commerce. It's great to be with all of you this afternoon. You know, I have been working with the chamber way before I got to the council. But let me start by thanking Thrive and the Foster City Chamber of Commerce for putting this candidate forum together. Thank you to the candidates for your willingness to serve and run for office. As an elected official, I know the level of commitment it takes to serve and run for office, as well as the sacrifice that you and your family endure. Before we get to the candidate forum, I would like to take a couple of minutes to share with you my experience with the Foster City Chamber Cares Initiative that happened in response to the COVID-19. As you know, early during the pandemic, we were all dealing with so much unknowns that really we didn't know what to do as we were in uncharted territory. So it was critical that before dealing with, before dealing and finding any solution that we understand the needs in our community. And that is where the Foster City Chamber Cares Initiative was critical. Foster City put this together, this collaborative and collective effort, where it brought the business community, small and large businesses, shared nonprofits, and the city of Foster City, which provided a platform where all of us could come in and share our needs, share our experiences, and discuss how best can we leverage our resources so we could come up with effective and more impactful solutions to the problem that we were dealing with. As a liaison to the Chamber Cares Initiative, I had tell you that based on that knowledge and based on that interaction, I was able to bring to the city council specific initiative that could be helpful and impactful to our community business community, where we ended up having to provide $200,000 of business resiliency grants, as well as financial assistance to many of the nonprofit organizations that you see here, including the Foster City Village, the San Mateo Foster City School District, San Mateo Foster City Education Foundation, and Samaritan House, and many others as well. So it is really great to see that level of engagement, that level of information. But that goes really beyond what the chamber put in their Chamber Cares Initiative. I share with you this specific example that for me, it kind of speaks volume about how committed is our Foster City Chamber of Commerce to our community. You know, during the COVID pandemic, most organizations, if not all, had to deal with financial hardship. Foster City Chamber of Commerce was not immune from that. But what did Foster City do because of the need in the community? They opened them doors to everyone in the community, whether being members of the chamber or not, for two simple reasons. First, they wanted to hear from everybody what their concerns are, what their challenges are, and more importantly, provide the resources for everybody so we could recover as a community and deal with the hardship that we are having all together in one forum so we could pull our resources and be more impactful. So I am personally, I'm very grateful to the role of our Foster City Chamber it played during the pandemic and quite frankly, before, and it continues today. They have really been a non-traditional chamber, and I certainly appreciate all the hard work that has gone to it. As a council member, I can tell you that the role of the nonprofit is critical to our communities beyond what appears at the surface. And it is so important to partnership between government and nonprofits is nourished and enhanced in a constant manner. I'm grateful again for the role that all the panelists here had played during the pandemic and for all the work that they do day in and day out. And I can tell you with full confidence that if we don't have our nonprofit, the government will be in big trouble and they cannot fill that void. So for that, I'm appreciative. And I want to say to all of you a big thank you. Now, back to the topic of the day, which is why we are all here, the candidate forum. You know, given what we have been through over the past 26 months and the lesson learned, this election is critical as we move forward in serving our community. This candidate forum is going to be an opportunity to provide a platform for the candidates to have a conversation with the voices of our community. So I urge the candidate to use this forum as an opportunity to learn and discuss the where and how government and nonprofit can better leverage and engage and support the work needed within our community. With that, I would like to hand it over to the chairs of the Chamber Cares Initiative, Dan Demers and Joanne Bohegan. Dan?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sam Hindi. It's wonderful to see you and thank you for those amazing words. I want to give a big thank you to Thrive and Petra for having us here, as well as the entire panel. But this would not be complete. I'm very honored to be here and be your co-host, but I cannot do it alone. And so it's my great honor to introduce you to my co-host this afternoon, Joanne Bohegan. Joanne, it's so great to be here.
It's great to actually do this again with you. I don't think I can do these without you at this point. So thanks so much, everyone, for joining us today.
Yeah, we've got a great program headed up for you. And you know, Sam is, Councilmember Hindi is such a hard act to follow and shared so many good story points to the Chamber Cares Initiative, but I wanted to kind of flesh it out a little bit more on where this came from. A mere four, I believe it was four days after the pandemic hit, the Chamber Cares Initiative was born. And Joanne and I, and along with Mara Curry, who is our person on the team for the chamber, the only person staff on our team. We all worked together and kind of came up with this idea and this initiative to provide support to any and all. You know, to what Councilmember Hindi said, we were not immune to it, but we found the need greater to help those in need over ourselves. And so we took on the impetus of the phrase "Together we can, Together we will", and we moved forward with that mindset and that ethos to bring together many different organizations, businesses, and nonprofits to join forces together and simply help. Help the community, help anybody who needed help in that time. Often in times of great trauma, you, everyone finds the strength and the courage to rise up to the occasion and help your fellow community members survive and strengthen. And I think that is very much the core of what the Chamber Cares Initiative is. And you'll see from these wonderful panelists and the individuals that are on this going to be asking questions throughout the session today. Each one of them has a deep-rooted and seeded passion, not only for what they do, but for the community that they serve. And you will hear that in their words and in their tone. And it is a great, great honor to be counted as one among them as we venture into this. So I encourage you, please, 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 listen carefully and to the candidates. Thank you so much for being here. As Councilmember Hindi said, thank you for stepping up and being open to this opportunity because it is an opportunity. But enough of me, right, Joanne? Let's get to introducing the candidates. So let's start with Noelia. If you would like to introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Noelia Corzo. I just want to clarify, is this my two-minute opener or just name?
Correct. Tell us who you are and what you're all about, and you've got two minutes.
Thank you so much for the space. So my name is Noelia Corzo. I'm currently a board trustee in the San Mateo Foster City School District. I was first elected in 2017, and I was elected by over 8,500 voters in the city of San Mateo and Foster City. I was then re-elected and through my years on the school board, I have really seen this. I've developed this amazing skill of combining like my nonprofit employment background with my political and policy-minded experiences. And so I kind of see these systemic improvements we can make everywhere I look. And you know, connected with my life experience, I grew up in the city of San Mateo, and I became a mom at the age of 20 years old. I graduated from San Francisco State with a bachelor's in sociology. And I, you know, graduated college with a toddler and immediately went into the nonprofit sector and began working with foster youth. So serving my community in the nonprofit world has always been a part of my experience, and it's something I'm deeply committed to. And you know, I am running in this election so that I can serve our community and so I can take all of the experiences that I've had and make sure that we are firing on all cylinders and really being effective. And you know, sometimes it's not about throwing more money at an issue, but it's about how that money is used, what systems and supports we have in place to make sure we get better outcomes. And that is what I'm committed to, and that is why I'm running for the Board of Supervisors. Thank you. I have six more seconds, sorry.
Six seconds. It's great to meet you, and thank you.
Yes, I'll just add that I have lived in Foster City and San Mateo.
Wow, that's great. Thank you so much. Cameron, you're up next. You have two minutes.
Yes, hello. I've lived here in San Mateo before they had a zip code. And I have watched the cities. I've watched T-Jack Foster build Foster City. In fact, I spent my Eagle Scout Jamboree out in the four square miles before it was Foster City. And I've seen a lot of things happen to the cities, Foster City, San Mateo. The growth has unfortunately been exponentially severe and I think very taxing on our people who live here. I am running for city, for San Mateo Board of Supervisors because I think the current Board of Supervisors don't realize the responsibilities that they have. If elected, one of the things I'm going to do is I'm going to contact everybody who's part of the departments the supervisors oversee because supervisors, part of the name, part of the noun is a supervise, and they don't realize that they're responsible for everything from the parks and the libraries to the division of weights and measures. And I think they've kind of not discussed their kinds of policies with with those people. My background is I'm a California state licensed private investigator. I think I know your father, Jim, from Belmont. And I approach everything in a very logical, very facts-only approach. And I think when presented with something, I go right to the facts. It doesn't bother me where it leads me, good, bad, or indifferent. I go where the facts lead me. If your father's Jim Deimers, I think I knew him. I've got 15 seconds. I see the countdown going. I think I'll leave most of the things for the direct questions that you're going to have for me later.
Wonderful. Thank you, Cameron. And I believe you probably do know my father, but I won't hold it against you. Charles Stone, you're up next. Do you have two minutes?
Thanks so much. Firstly, I want to thank Thrive and the chambers, folks, for putting on this forum today. It's really important. I'm running for San Mateo County Supervisor because I deeply love this county. I was raised here. I went to our local public schools, Abbott Middle School and Hillsdale High School, Go Falcons, Go Knights. And I've lived either in San Mateo or Belmont for the last 33 years. And I want to make sure that the San Mateo County of tomorrow will be a safe, welcoming, equitable, and wonderful place for my daughters and all of our children to live, work, and play. For those who don't know me well, I'm a father, local business owner, Rotarian, two-time former mayor, and I've been on the city council in Belmont for over eight years. I initially ran for office after being an advocate for public education in our school district and was on our education foundation board. In doing that work, I discovered that our city council was ignoring young families and working against rather than with our schools. Our business community also felt ignored and shut out by a council that had created a culture of no, especially to redeveloping and modernizing our town. My priorities are protecting against the threats that climate change poses, like wildfires that are increasing in intensity and frequency, droughts and bay pollution, and ensuring that we continue to provide top-notch professional public safety, prepare for disasters, create affordable housing, develop a world-class public transit system, and make sure we have equal access to core services. During the past eight-plus years, it's been an honor to serve not only local community, but the entire county as a SAM Trans Director and two-time Chair of the Board of Directors, San Mateo County Library JPA Board Member and former Chair of the Governing Board, and Caltrain Joint Powers Board Member and current Vice Chair. I'm also particularly proud to have been a member of the working group that brought Peninsula Clean Energy to life and to have served on its governing board. In those roles and on the city council, the talk as merit 2017, I helped pass our first climate action plan and our downtown specific plan. And for the first time in over 30 years, I'm in disrepair. And we have created a culture of how do we get to yes? I want to build on that track record of success on our Board of Supervisors.
That's great. Thank you so much, Charles. Really appreciate it. Joanne, you have got some things to share with the team, yes?
I do, I do. But I think you would only be right that everyone has the opportunity to meet their panel before they're asked to answer questions to an unknown audience. So what we're going to do is we're going to do a very quick round of introductions. And what I'd like to ask is that each of our panelists take one minute, no more, to introduce who you are, the organization that you are representing, and one of the biggest lessons learned and why this forum today is important to you. And then, once we get through all of the panelists, we will move into a general question that has been created from a collaboration from each of the panelists together. And each of the candidates will have the opportunity to address that. Sounds great? So with that, I'm going to ask that Bart Charlo kick us off. Hi, Bart.
Hi, folks. I'm Bart Charlo. I'm CEO of Samaritan House, and you probably know we're the central anti-poverty agency serving all of San Mateo County. We provide everything that the working poor need to survive and then thrive is food, shelter, clothing, healthcare, financial assistance, and all kinds of other good stuff for the community. And what I have had reinforced for me throughout the past couple of years is just how important it is that the community is built of organizations and individuals who serve, who really care. So I'm hoping that you will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart. Cheryl. You're still on mute?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Joanne. I'm Cheryl Angeles, President and CEO of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce. And I've been in that position for 11 years and worked very closely with Joanne on a number of issues, which I appreciate. During the pandemic, I started a business assistance center, and we have to date served 35 businesses in the local area and would like to accelerate that and continue on helping. What I would like to see, I think San Mateo is a fantastic community. We all know that. And I would like to continue to see government and business working closely together. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Cheryl. Dan?
Oh, my name is Dan Deimers. I represent the arts community in San Mateo County. I'm used to run Hill Barn Theater in Foster City for about a decade and have since moved into the tech world, but am a strong advocate and strategic partner, not only for nonprofits, but for arts organizations throughout the county and beyond. I am looking forward to hearing your thoughtful responses to the amazing questions that are going to be laid out in front of you. And I just encourage you to take your time, think about it, and be as honest as possible.
Thanks, Dan. Eleanor?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much, all of you for being here. I would like to say that we are Alliance Club, and I'm here on behalf of the Peninsula Special Interest Lions Club, which is a medical club, the only one in Lions International. When we started out, now we have 15 of them. Why do we do this? Because we found out that when we joined the Chamber Cares, I have to tell you, we found out where the need was. That's what we do. We have to unearth the need, and we can't do it without the chamber. We know that now. It was very, very important to have this collaboration, and it worked, worked out just fine. We were able to supply, supply, supply wherever the need was. And we are still supplying, supplying, supplying. And by the way, Bart, we have another 500 masks to you that are sitting in our clinic, right, number five? And thanks to Bart, we have a nice free adjunct clinic that we stitch, we inject, we had, we gave out 12,000 injections over the past 18, 19 months. And it was amazing, both flu and COVID. So thank you all, and thank you for coming, candidates. I hope we have a very, very good time with you, and I know we will.
Thank you, Eleanor. Marlene?
Hi, everybody. I'm Marlene Hopper. I'm the Vice President of the Board of Directors, the Membership Chair, and Community Outreach for Foster City Village. We are the first village to form in San Mateo County. There are about 28 villages in the Bay Area from San Jose to Berkeley to Marin County. And we're all about the elders. We're all about making life enjoyable, fun, and that they continue to live in their homes where they're a place of choice and be vital and involved in the community. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you and to Joanne and Thrive for putting this together.
Thanks, Marlene. Mark?
Mark, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. My name is Mark Watson. I'm a local attorney and own the local newspaper in the county. More importantly, I'm here today representing the Rotary Club of Foster City. I'm a former president and currently Assistant District Governor and involves in many nonprofits, both here in the city and in the county. I've lived in San Mateo for 30 years and Foster City for 20. I love the people and the quality life that we enjoy here in the county, and I'd love to hear how you all will be working hard to make the county even better. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Sonia?
My name is Sonia Tappan, and I'm the Executive Director for the past two years for the San Mateo Foster City Education Foundation. The foundation, as most of you know, is a nonprofit that works solely for the benefit of the public schools in the San Mateo and Foster City School District. We are thrilled to be here and be able to be part of this forum because we know that nothing happens without the partnership of everyone in our community. And we are especially thankful to Thrive and the Foster City Chamber of Commerce for putting this forum on. And we are very excited to hear the candidates' responses to the questions that have been thoughtfully curated by this panel. We know that nonprofits work in conjunction, and as a group, if the Foster City Cares Initiative, we have thrived under the leadership of Joanne and the group. So we thank everyone for being part of this discussion today.
Thanks, Sonia. And Roseanne?
Thanks, Joanne, and thank you to the Foster City Chamber of Commerce and to the Thrive Alliance for putting this on. I'm Roseanne Faust. I'm the President and CEO of SAM Seda, and our organization did the ultimate swivel. I refuse to use the word pivot anymore. Two years ago, when the pandemic started, we started swizzling along with the Foster City Chamber and their whole cares initiative. And we partnered with everyone on this screen, actually, to get out information, to get out grants, to really step up and step out and help our small businesses. And this is an exciting time for us as we begin the recovery. So here we are, and I'm grateful for the candidates. Anyone running for elected office deserves our appreciation and gratitude.
Thanks so much. All right, we're going to get to the fun stuff. This is question time. So this next question is the question that was created from this entire team. And so it's a little meaty. I'm going to read it somewhat slowly, and then the question will also be put in the chat. And as Petra informed, we need to take turns and allow each of the candidates to have the first opportunity to speak. So Noelia had spoken her candidate statement first. So this next question, the first person to answer will be Cameron, followed by Charles, followed by Noelia. So with that, thank you to the team and on behalf of us all. During the pandemic, the county moved to a new level of coordination with nonprofits and the business community in order to deal with many of the crises. The Chamber Cares Initiative, this collaboration, represents a parallel organizing process that nonprofits, citizens, group... that nonprofits, citizens groups, and our businesses, large and small, used successfully to pull together resources on the ground rapidly and effectively. Most represented here worked directly in the county's coordinating teams as well. And coordination has been pivotal in our survival. The county depends on nonprofits for much of its essential services. Yet contracting with nonprofits has seemingly been arbitrary. What will you do to ensure that the county contracts and or funds nonprofits as the partners we are and you need, rather than just commodity vendors? Would you support a county-wide coordination effort, much as the chamber has done here? What will you do and how to continue and expand on this level of collaboration that has been proven between the county, nonprofits, and our businesses? And how will you ensure the county departments don't snap back to pre-COVID practices?
Goodness. Tea, can I write this down and get back to you?
It's in the chat, Cameron. You can address it as best as you can to get the conversation started.
I have to, I have to say that when the COVID hit, the first thing that happened was everybody got stunned and we just, we just froze. And I am delighted that every city individually came forth and did things for, I think the hardest hit was the restaurateurs. And they moved out into the streets. It was very Parisian. I went back and I've, you know, I eat out often. I love to eat out and to sit out there. I thought that was a great support to bring some of the small businesses in, into the fold. The second of all is there's so many nonprofit organizations out there and they, they do very well. And I have to say Samaritan House is one of them. But I do think there should be an umbrella that, that disseminates information and guides people to the various nonprofits. I noticed things like many nonprofit organizations can't filter people to the correct sources, to the direct things like a clearinghouse. I think the county should set up a clearinghouse that if somebody has a problem, needs assistance with housing or with finances or with something, to direct them to the proper nonprofit people. And I'll tell you something, I've been a member of a number of nonprofit organizations, and it is made up of extremely dedicated and very conscientious people. And I don't think they're rewarded handsomely enough. The problem is, it is nonprofit. I think as a supervisor, I think there should be a county clearinghouse. If you call one number, we can direct you if you're homeless, if you're threatened, if you're part of a, do I have a time clock going here? Can I just keep rambling?
I guess you have two seconds left.
Thank you for that. Charles.
Thanks so much. So the county contracts with quite a few nonprofits already and quite effectively. And there's seven or eight core service providers that they've contracted with for decades. In my role as a board member on various boards and at the city council level, one of the things I push for is that we consistently and constantly reevaluate how we're doing things. So I would love to see our county take a look at, you know, are, are we still doing the best things for, for the outcomes we want? And we need to have a regular reassessment of these contracts and establish really firm metrics for success. And if those aren't met, then we need to take a look at, at doing things differently. You know, I, I think the pandemic really showed us that San Mateo County is a county of collaboration. And when we're absolutely forced to, we can really get things done. I'd like to us to be able to get things done in that same manner, even when we're not faced with a crisis. And I think that there's a number of lessons that can be learned from the pandemic. And that's probably chief among them. I mean, the, the way the San Mateo County's strong effort came together so quickly was nothing short of remarkable. I can think of ten other things that I would have liked to have seen happen that fast pre-crisises that took ten times as long. So yeah, that, that's my answer is we need to be, we, we need to be consistent with how we evaluate these things at, you know, stated intervals. And if they're not meeting the metrics that we define, then we need to move on from those partnerships and find other ones. I'll leave the rest of the time for the rest of the group.
Thanks so much, Charles. Noelia.
Thank you. This is an excellent question, and I love to see it because I think, you know, as someone who works for a nonprofit and was part of, you know, was one of those bridge builders that connected people really in need. So I work at Golden Gate Regional Center and I was a social worker. I'm, I've now been promoted to another role, but I'm still working directly with families and social workers. So I'm very much connected to the need. And something that was very clear to me was that our essential workers, our nonprofit workers, they were just inundated with so much need, so much more need than we'd ever seen before. And while we do, while our county does rely on our core agencies, our core agencies are nonprofits, and so they have nonprofit workers. And nonprofit workers often have to make really difficult choices about, do I continue following my passion? And, you know, my, my dedication to serve my community in this way? Or do I need to move away to, to feed, to make sure I have enough to, you know, for housing and childcare, et cetera? And so I think it's really important that we provide our nonprofits with really secure, stable funding so that they are able to improve their infrastructure and decrease their staff turnover, as well as make sure that they have not just the funding, but the infrastructure in terms of like systems and processes to handle the level of need that we will see every crisis that we have. So, you know, what about, what about if we have an earthquake, right? The pandemic was something we couldn't foresee. An earthquake would be similar. I dedicate, I'm dedicated to making sure that as a supervisor, I would have quarterly meetings with community partners to make sure that we are in alignment about what those needs are and how we can meet them.
Thanks so much. Dan, you have the next question, please. To tease to Bart, I should be more specific.
Thank you. Yes, so then this, this next question is coming from Bart Charlo at Samaritan House. Bart, do you, you want to hop off mute and ask your question?
Sure, okay.
And just as a reminder to all the candidates, really quick, sorry Bart, you do have two minutes. If you cannot see the timer, please let us know in the chat, but you will be muted after the two minutes. Bart, take it away.
You got it. Okay. Samaritan House is dedicated to fighting poverty, which, as you probably realize, exists in large measure all over our county, despite the overall wealth we have here. If you're elected, what are you going to do to ensure that we move towards more economic equality? And what are you going to do to help ameliorate the excess in the cost of essentials such as housing and food?
Okay, I think I'm up first, if I understood correctly. All right, great. So thanks very much. That's a great question, Barton. It's good to see you and thanks for your tremendous work. You know, there are a number of really important answers to this question, but the first one you mentioned in the question, it's housing. The lack of affordable housing is the number one most daunting factor that folks that make lower incomes are facing. And what we need to get serious about is densifying the transit corridor along the El Camino Real and along the Caltrain line. It truly prioritizes affordable housing. We've also done some really good work on raising the minimum wage. That's another important pillar in this discussion. I'd like to see that become a truly countywide minimum wage, and that's something I'll prioritize if I'm elected. But the main focus here needs to be the creation of housing. And I like to tell a quick story often to really bring it home for people who maybe haven't lived here their whole lives like I have. When I moved back from college in nineteen ninety-seven, I moved in with two roommates on East Thirty-Ninth and San Mateo Village. And we rented a three-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment for nine hundred dollars a month. With utilities, my, my all-in costs of living every month were four hundred fifty dollars a month. I made forty-two thousand dollars a year, and I thought I was rich. My children are never going to see anything like that. And, and we truly have to address this unless we want to become an island of wealthy only people, which I don't think is good for any of us. We need socioeconomic diversity. And for every tech job that pays two to three hundred thousand dollars a year, there's four or five support jobs that's created. And we don't want those people crossing one, two, sometimes three bridges to get here and spending two to three hours on the road. That's not good for their health. It's not good for our planet's health. There's a lot of other answers, Bart. There's a lot of things we need to do, but the most impactful things we can do are fix housing and fix employment. And the way to do that is through a countywide minimum wage. Thank you.
Cameron.
I think affordable housing is one thing, but I think increasing everybody's economic income is more important. I went to the College of San Mateo, and at the time, the College of San Mateo was extremely heavy on crafts jobs. They had classes in welding, they had classes in broadcasting, they had classes in dentist, dental assisting. They had classes in pilots, they had classes, and, and that's all gone away. They've replaced it all now with scholastic programming. I think it's important that I want to promote and push the junior colleges to bring back the crafts. And so that people can go to a junior college, learn a tremendous skill, an electrician, a plumber, things that the community colleges had in the seventies and eighties, the nineties, and no longer have. So I think it's more important to not raise the minimum standards. I think it's more important to provide these people with a fantastic education. I received two credentials from the College of San Mateo, which have really assisted me and, and as an economic situation. I think if you gave somebody the choice, if I asked you, which would you rather do? Provide economic housing or offer somebody probably an increase of twenty thousand dollars a year with a skill that was developed virtually free of charge at a community college? I think you'd all go for the latter. So I think I would like to promote a higher level of, of education for people who are interested in developing craft skills. We are dire need of these kinds of people. You're going to build these homes, you're going to build these facilities, you have to have the electricians, you have to have the plumbers. Where are they going to come from? I think the only place they can come from is community college. That's what I'm going to stress. Education, craft skills for people to raise their economic level.
It's Cameron. Noelia.
Thank you. Another excellent question. So, you know, I, I got to say that there are still people in our community who have degrees, bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, who are making under fifty, sixty K in essential roles in our community. And so it's not necessarily about the education that they have. It's about how our community is valuing the work that they're doing. And so I do believe raising the minimum wage is a part of the solution. But I have to say that we can't just stop there. We have to make sure that our county is incentivizing and supporting cities in doing the same because, you know, the county makes the decision for the unincorporated areas, not for every single city. And so that's why we have different cities where you have, you know, vastly different minimum wages. And, and that is something that we can do something about. I also want to say, when it comes to housing affordability, this is something that is very near and dear to my heart as someone who has been a renter my entire life and who has been homeless and actually been a Samaritan House client and went to go get my free school uniforms from Samaritan House growing up. I will say that what we need to do is we need to make sure that we are tackling the problem from all sides. So we need to improve relationships and support for building more affordable housing. And when I think about that, I think about it from a school district lens, right? We have school districts that have land but don't have money. We have school districts that have money but not land. And I think our county can support those partnerships to build more affordable housing. But we cannot forget that we still have many, many tenants in our community. And so I think a rental registry is important so that we make sure that there's a system of accountability in our community. Tenants, our essential workers, our most vulnerable community members are.
You hit the mute button, Noelia. We, we hit it for you.
When did I hit it? I was trying to stop my timer.
We, we hit it for you. Petra did. Thanks so much. Okay, Cheryl, next question. And Cameron, I believe, is going to answer this one first. So Cheryl.
Thank you, Joanne. The Chamber of Commerce is known as being the leading voice of business in our communities. How could our voice help government to strengthen our business community? And what do you think the role of the chamber is and should play to assist our businesses?
Wow, again, I think I'm first again, right out of the chute. You know, I want to comment very quickly about Noelia and what she said about people who have degrees and can't get a job. We talk about, you know, the story about the, the Mills Hospital surgeon who had a dinner party, two hours before the dinner party, his toilet backed up and he called a plumber. The plumber showed up and he said, oh my God, help me, help me. And when he was done, he handed him the bill. And the, and the Mills surgeon said, you know, my God, I don't charge this amount of money and I'm a surgeon. And the plumber said, yes, I know, I used to be a surgeon. So don't ever overlook the people who do the crafts. I think the county is the leader to a lot of things. I think a lot of the local cities and merchants look to the county to see how they handle their zoning of businesses and how they handle the businesses. It's very difficult for a city to make the initiative and to start to do things for their local businesses. I think every city says, okay, who's the, who's on point? I think it's going to be the county. And I, I think if the county gives incentives to businesses to further their business, gives incentives to people to, to do all kinds of, and I just was, I just looked at the Americans with disabilities. And a lot of these, a lot of these businesses have been shut down because they failed to make the ADA compliance. I think the county should step in and offer assistance to some of the local businesses on a city level because the county has the finances to do that. So you see these businesses that are hit with an ADA requirement, I think the county should spearhead that. And I think that would help a lot of these businesses that are having a lot of problems, especially financially. I think that should be a county umbrella to help everybody in that situation, to help the small businesses. And I think, again, the, the county is the, is the spearhead of these kinds of things. That's just one of many things that I could recommend. The county could help the small business person.
Thanks, Cameron. It looks like we haven't posted the question in chat, so I'd like to do that. But we will go ahead and I'll ask Cheryl to please repeat her question. Charles, you're next up.
Hi again. So chambers are known, oh, I think it's up now, Joanne.
Okay, great. I see it now. Thank you so much. And I apologize. Someone texted me and said my internet's been coming in and out. So if any time you can't hear me, somebody wave or something so I know. My relationship with the Chambers of Commerce has been excellent since I, I was elected. I actually started the Redwood City San Mateo County Leadership Program six months or so before I ran for office and completed it just after I got in. And that was a tremendously helpful program in terms of teaching me about the relationship between our business community, our governments, and our elected officials. You know, I want to, I want to note for a second the wonderful programs that the chambers were involved with during the pandemic. The Great Plates Program, SMC Strong. These were all things that we couldn't have done without our business community partners. And on the government side, I think we did some really good things, right, too? We waived health fee, health inspection fees. In Belmont, we waived the fee to create a parklet. We still had inspection fees, but at least the, the regular fee to apply for one, we waived. And we tried to help folks as much as possible. And Belmont was one of the cities that also went into its own pocket for a hundred thousand dollars to help bolster the SMC Strong Fund. I think that that's one of the great benefits of San Mateo County is that all of our leaders understand that our business community is key to our success. And working in partnership like we have for so many decades is what leads us to have such a high quality of life and such a great relationship. You know, Cameron brought up a good point about ADA lawsuits. I've actually worked with the county already to help find a certified access specialist. Those are CASPs. In my day job as an attorney, I work with a firm that defends these lawsuits. And we do need to provide more support, hopefully through county subsidies. If folks want to bring a CASP in to proactively prepare for these lawsuits before they get taken for twenty to forty thousand dollars by some folks who may or may not be scrupulous. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Noelia.
Thank you. So I will say that I'm not an expert when it comes to chamber. I am a nonprofit, a long-time nonprofit worker and a board trustee and a single mom of an eleven-year-old. So I play many roles. a long time nonprofit worker and a board trustee and a single mom of an 11-year-old, so I play many roles. But I will say that I've learned a lot of lessons about what is really effective. And I've seen our, our business partners really show up for our community when, when needed and specifically for our school district. So I know, so I'm just here from our Ed Foundation and the partnerships between, you know, our businesses and our school district have been really key in making sure that we are making improve, that we are improving outcomes in our schools. So I will say that I think there's a, a lot of potential here to, to strengthen those relationships. Specifically with really creating programs or strengthening and funding programs that support our most vulnerable communities. So when I think about the power of business and of entrepreneurship and what it can do for women, what it can do for people of color, what it can do for low-income communities that really need those skills and those opportunities. I think that is something that we can, we can really collaborate more on to make sure that, you know, we're serving our community well. I also think we can learn from some practice. So I know practices in the, in the business sector. So I know some, some corporations, some organizations have diverse hiring slates. I think that's really important. And that is not something that we have seen translated to government, but I think is really important and effective. When you have a diverse perspective, you have better outcomes. So I am definitely dedicated to learning more and being a better advocate for these partnerships. But that, that's just my initial, my, my, those are my initial thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We are going to ask Dan to ask the next question. And who is up first? Charles, is it you?
I believe it's Noelia.
Is it Noelia first? Losing count. See, I told you, counting to three. There you go. Dan.
All right. My question is, the arts and arts education continues to be a pivotal cornerstone, not only for mental health of the county, but the continued intrinsic value of enrichment to the human spirit of our community. How do you see the future of arts in San Mateo County and the role you wish to play?
Thank you. I will say that I think art is, art is healing. It's, it's necessary for our community and it's not always valued as much as it should be. I, I wouldn't call myself an artist, but I, I am a poet at times. And so I've actually, I contributed a poem to Eileen Casinetto's collection that she shared pretty recently. So if you all are interested, you can go look me up in there. But I actually, I believe that art is, is pivotal. It has to be central to our community. I have my sister as an artist. It's very, it's very near and dear to my heart. But when I think about our community, I think we absolutely, I would love to see more murals, more community projects. These are the types of things that really create connection in our community that transcend, you know, race, economic status, whatever label you want to put out there. Art can bring people together in a really powerful, powerful way. So I, I would love to see more support and celebration and more art in our, in our communities. And I would absolutely love to support that and make sure that we have funding and the support to organize these beautiful events and make sure they're well attended. And that we address the need in our, the needs in our schools as well. You know, we shouldn't have disparities between who has access to art and who doesn't in our county. We have, we are a county of wealth. We can solve that problem. And we need to. And yes, we have our nonprofits and our business partners, but our government also has to, you know, step up to the plate and make sure that we aren't allowing these kinds of disparities here. We, we have enough wealth not to, to, yeah, we have enough wealth here to solve that problem.
Cameron.
Unmuting the microphone. This is headed right for Dan. Dan, you want to know, 25, 30 years, I've volunteered at Hill Barn Theater. If I walk into the lobby where you have all the lists of all the shows, of all the productions. My mother started Hill Barn Theater in 1969, when it was under the control of the College of San Mateo. My brother-in-law is the musical director there at the Hill Barn Theater. And my nieces teach there during the summer. All the world's a stage. And, and I've always wanted in high school to make drama mandatory class because we're all judged by our personalities and some of us are very shy and, and we need that to get out in the world. So to me, the arts is the stage, whether it be a musical, whether it be a production, whether it be the theater. Like I said, there's, there's, there's 30 productions. I know Hill Barn has got every show they've ever done from the beginning. And every time I go to Hill Barn, and let me tell you something, a stage manager, I've rung the lobby bell a number of times. I've lit the, the fire in the, in the fire pit a number of times. I, I really promoted Hill Barn Theater. I think everybody should be involved in the theater. And again, to quote Shakespeare, all the world's a stage and we're merely players upon it. And I think that is something that I would like to promote more, more of the theater, more of the arts, more of these things. And the summer school that Hill Barn provides is outstanding to today's youth. I'm very, very pro-education. I'm very pro, pro-theater. So there you go, Dan. You walked right into something that I know a great deal about is Hill Barn Theater. I haven't been there recently, but I've seen the last four productions. So that's, that's to me, the arts, the theater, Foster City, Hill Barn, absolutely champion.
Charles.
Thanks so much. Well, Belmont is the epicenter of the arts community in San Mateo County. And it's one of the things we're very proud of. The Peninsula Museum of Art started right here in Belmont. Ruth Waters started it here. Like San Mateo County, we have a poet laureate. Not every city has that. We're very proud of that. I helped bring that to Belmont about six or seven years ago. We've also done some really nice work around making our utility boxes much more attractive. Redwood City and San Carlos led the way, but we came in right behind them. And I really liked the mural approach in Redwood City that their commission has been a, a part of. It's quite, quite something. If you haven't walked around town and looked at all the different locations, you really should. You know, one, one of the things that doesn't get a lot of play when we talk about the arts is, is music. Everyone goes right to painting and sculpting. But here in Belmont, we have a very active nightlife with three or four bars where we allow live music. And that's something the city has actively encouraged. And it's, it's really nice to see that happening. At a county level, the County Arts Commission is where, where it all happens. They coordinate a number of functions and I'd like to see that continue in the robust fashion that it has, you know. One of the biggest challenging things that, that artists face here is, is living here. I'm going to bring it back to housing. If you think it's tough to work as someone who's making $50,000 or $60,000 to live here, someone who's making $50,000 or $60,000 a year, try being a starving artist. It's almost impossible. And it's equally challenging to find space. That same Peninsula Museum of Art that we all love so much that started in Belmont had a really hard time trying to find someplace to locate after their Berlin Game lease came up. I'm a big fan of using city and county property to allow folks to do art. And here in Belmont, what we do is in the Twin Pines Art Complex, we actually allow artists to use the studios at subsidized rates so that folks who otherwise couldn't afford to do their art can do so. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And we are halfway through our forum and we are tight and efficient on time. So if we stay in line, we will actually finish on time with very brief closing remarks. So with that, Eleanor, please, your next question. And first up will be Cameron.
Go ahead and take yourself off.
Eleanor, you have to unmute.
I'm so sorry. I, my cursor would not work. A good afternoon again, and thank you, Chamber. Thank you, Thrive. And thank you, friends and all our associates here today. I have a great feeling for the cherished Chamber of Commerce. And I want to address that when I address all of the questions here. Our cultural goals are always a great concern for nonprofits. All cultural goals, they're very deep. How can we work more closely with the Board of Supervisors to keep it apprised of these goals in a team-like effort to achieve greater scale? That's the first part of the question. The second question is partnerships between the nonprofits and governments to create the right conditions for decision-making to serve and fund our communities is critical. How would you work to accomplish this? Thank you.
Thanks, Eleanor. Cameron.
I think individually, I think everything is marketing and media. I think if you've got a great product, it doesn't work unless you get it out there. I think a lot of nonprofit organizations don't have the finances to promote themselves, to advertise, to get themselves out in the community. And I think what the, what the county supervisor should do is put together a program to really put out the marketing and the reach, whether it be Samaritan House or whether it be Hill Barn Theater or whether it be the Hiller Aviation Museum for Youth. I think individually, I don't think there's the budget to get that out to the community. But I think if they all collaborate together with the San Mateo County supervisors, I think the supervisors can put together a large media blitz to the people of San Mateo County and say, these are what's available. The libraries horribly underutilized, that's a county operation. But again, a lot of the, the arts programs, a lot of people just don't know they're there. And I think if the county with their very high budget could put together a marketing and an advertising to bring people to these facilities, I think that would be a greater whole than it would be to have the individual people try to market themselves. I think as a San Mateo County supervisor, I'm going to put together a program where it's a kind of a one-stop shopping mart for all of the nonprofits to be able to pool themselves together with the county to, to, to promote yourselves out to the community to know the services are there. It's no good having a service. Nobody knows about it. It's no good having the facility if nobody knows what you do or how to get there. Samaritan House is a fantastic organization, but if you don't know it's there, you can't reach out, you can't be a part of it, you can't contribute.
Thank you. Charles.
Thanks so much. So before I get started, I just wanted to correct something. Our libraries are oversubscribed, not underutilized. As a member of the JPA, I can proudly say that both in Foster City and Belmont, we have tens of thousands of people coming through our libraries. And often we have events that are at capacity, of course, pre-pandemic, but now people are coming back. You know, I think primarily this is a question about engagement. And my, my brand as a council member has been engagement. I have monthly coffees with Charles. I have quarterly stakeholder meetings. And it's Board of Supervisors. So for instance, if I were lucky enough to get elected and represented it would be my plan to re-meet rate, not only when I'm volunteering at Samaritan House, but other times. It says my connection's unstable. Can everyone still hear me? Okay. Nod your heads if you can hear me. Okay, good. And so it would be incredibly important to me to, to come to you, hopefully in groups rather than one-on-one, which could be a little time-consuming, and hear from you how you're doing on your goals and what we can do to align our goals. And I'm not going to criticize anyone. I just think that that is an area where the, the current status quo could be improved a little bit. So that, that's my answer is this is about engagement. It's about us having a dialogue and make sure, making sure that we both know what's going on. I'm, I try to be everywhere. I'm not as good as, at it as Jerry Hill was. He was really everywhere. But it's really important to me as an elected leader to be there and support our nonprofit partners whenever they have events, whenever they're announcing good news, whenever they need help. That's my answer. Thanks.
Thanks, Charles. Noelia.
Thank you. You know, I think it's really important that we have strong partnerships. And I mentioned earlier that I think it's important to have like regular meetings with community partners, but I also beyond that, I think it's really important that when we, as governments, as elected officials call on our nonprofits and they show up for us, we have to remember to do the same for them. Not just when it's to celebrate moments, but in moments where, you know, maybe we have nonprofits, maybe we have leaders that are overwhelmed, need support. They don't know what to ask for, right? But if you, if you're tuned in, then you are there as a resource to help when needed. And that's really important because we're tackling the same issues, we're helping the same community. And so we have to make sure that we're, we're, we have strong partnerships on, on both sides of the equation. I'll give you an example of how I've done this in my role. I am on the, as a board trustee for the SMFC School District. And as a parent in our community, I have worked closely with the Mid Peninsula Boys and Girls Club for many years. They actually shut down during the pandemic and I kept waiting for them to reopen. And I kept calling their executive director just to check in every couple of months. And, you know, at one point, I, I ended up getting a call from a fellow council, not a fellow, I'm not on the city council, but from a council member in East Palo Alto. And he was asking me about the Boys and Girls Club and how much need we had and how many unduplicated students we had in our, in our school district and in our, in our, in our two cities and, and, you know, I, I, I shared that information. I, I kept following up. And now, you know, we will be having improved services and more childcare available in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, which is the Mid Peninsula Boys and Girls Club, which is merging with another, with the Peninsula Boys and Girls Club from a little south, a little more down south in our county.
Thanks, Noelia. Okay, Marlene, question from the village. And it looks like Charles, you're first up on this one.
Marlene, you can take yourself off.
Got it. I'd like to make a statement before I ask my two questions. Foster City Village promotes working with all socioeconomic abilities in the city. And because Foster City is selling homes for a million to $4 million, you think that the community is as such. There's a tremendous amount of low-income people that live in Section 8 housing that we promote in Foster City Village by the low, by the low-cost membership or no membership at all so that they can participate and have fun. Just to make you aware, when the the Chamber Cares Initiative, we distributed 1,500 meals during that period of time. Today, Second Harvest Food Bank delivers twice a month. The first and third Friday of every month, an 18-wheeler truckload. And we distribute to 550 individuals once a month. That's pretty mind-boggling from my perspective from Foster City. So based on that, I would like to ask, how will you address the issue of low-income adults in our county? And how are you going to support organizations like the Foster City Village and other nonprofits serving this community to enable us to grow and do more? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That's a great question. So let me remark first by saying that the, the silver or senior tsunami that we've been hearing about for a decade is here. And there are going to be more and more seniors needing assistance in the near term. And that means our county's got to have a suite of services and wraparound services available to serve that population. The county operates and funds a robust set of services already for seniors and the funding is going to need to be increased, is what I'm trying to say. There are SNAP benefits, welfare benefits, and, and one of the most significant issues, which I heard you hit upon, is, is housing. You're right, a million, I don't know if you can get anything for a million in Foster City anymore. It'd be a challenge. You know, we need to create the conditions so that seniors can, can step into their own homes, be supported in their homes and get out of their homes and come to programmatic things like, like the Belmont Rec Center has where we engage with folks through bingo and other programs to make sure they have an opportunity not to become shut-ins. The pandemic was a significant challenge to the county, but I think we really saw, like I said earlier, where we can do a better job cooperating. You know, some kids in Belmont, for instance, before we even got the Great Plates Program, some kids from Carlmont High put together their own program where they started delivering food to seniors. And I was just amazed and touched by that. That's the kind of thing that really keeps you going, right? But we need, we need, we need to. But we need, we need, we need to remain vigilant and not let these things slide back to the way they used to be. So I personally, if I become your supervisor, will be out there volunteering, my staff will be out there volunteering alongside shoulder-to-shoulder with you. We'll be promoting your events and we'll be looking for all the opportunities we can to partner with you and similar institutions, not only in District Two, but throughout the county, because this isn't an issue that's unique just to San Mateo Foster City in Belmont.
Thanks, Charles. Noelia.
I want to say that this is a, an issue that's very near and dear to my heart. Not, I don't think everyone knows this, but I actually was my dad's caretaker last year while he was recovering from long-haul COVID. And my father is on a fixed income, so he is this person that we're talking about. My father is in his mid-seventies and definitely needed a lot of support. And I have to, I just really want to highlight how much support is needed when we're talking about folks who aren't technology savvy, who, who don't know how to get on the internet and you know, don't know how to navigate our really complex systems. You know, whether it's our healthcare system, whether it's our, just any system you can think of, right? Navigating even the community and transportation, right? These are issues that are really impactful for a lot of people. And it takes a lot of time, it's really time-intensive to make sure folks have that support. So as this need increases, I think it's really important that we bring back health navigators in our county. Health is not just about going to the doctor, it's about being connected, it's about housing, it's about having food, et cetera. And I think health navigators in our community could really be an asset to people of all income levels and specifically our elders, because you know, they just need a little bit more help sometimes, and they also have so much to give. And I think it's really important that we understand that it's that we understand that it's they are not a burden on our community, they are the foundation of our community. And so we have to make sure that their needs are met and that we are taking care of, of those needs.
Thank you, Noelia. Cameron.
I think Charles Stone's absolutely right. Finding a house in Foster City that's less than two million dollars. Twice a day, I walk my dog around the block and once a week, right on the corner, they set up the food boxes that they distribute and the cars start lining up. And I notice the cars drive up and they hand them a box of food, and the cars line up and they hand them a box of food. And, and that is equality. But I think people don't understand the difference between equality and equity. You know, the story about three people trying to look over the, the right field fence to see a baseball game, and equality is everybody gets a stool to help them look over the fence. Equity is the tallest person sacrifices some height of his school to give the shorter person a, a height advantage that, that they don't have. And I think that's a problem that we have, I think everybody's treated equally, but I don't think we have an equity system here. I think one of the things we should do is go into the community and realize who needs more services than others. There's no triaging that we have. I think we should triage the needs and the wants of every family. Give them more if they have a larger family. Give them, you know, and to say that people who are a little better off, I'm sorry. The height of your stool is going to go to somebody to boost them up because they're a little shorter of stature. I think that's important. I think as a supervisor, we're going to, I'm going to put together a program that goes into each community, and just, everybody just doesn't get one box of food. We have to discover what their needs are. And I sit there and I watch the cars line up and they get their one box of food. Well, maybe somebody needs two boxes, and maybe somebody doesn't need a full box that week. I think we should devise a way to get the equity and not just the equality for the people who need financial assistance, who need homes assistance, who need those kinds of things. I think as a county supervisor, I'm going to put together a program.
Thanks very much. Mark. You will ask the next question, and Noelia, you're first up.
I have a two-part question. One of the newest areas of focus for Rotary International is improving and protecting the environment. So I'd like to ask, what new initiatives do you hope to launch during your term to improve the environment here in the county? And then also, what experience do you have of building partnerships between local government and nonprofit organizations? Thanks.
Thank you. So, you know, I think it's really important that I'm just glad that this is a question because we absolutely have to remember that we need to really move, move the dial on, on this issue as a community because it impacts us all. And without, you know, without taking care of our earth, we, we won't be here much longer. So I'll, I'll say that I think it's really important that we have alignment. I, I think about climate change. When I think about climate change, I think about, you know, what some of our biggest polluters are here in this community and you know, we, we have to recognize that you know, if we were to really get cars off the road, that would make a huge improvement. But we also have to understand that, you know, wildfires and really being prepared for that, as well as sea level rise, we are uniquely vulnerable when it comes to sea level rise. That, these are all issues that we can do something about. I think it's important that we prioritize public transportation and make sure that we are moving towards reducing carbon emissions and divesting from fossil fuels. I will say that, for example, the lane expansion project on 101 is something that I think was going in the wrong direction. But just back to your question, you know, how do we build partnerships between nonprofits and local governments on this issue? I think we have to remember that we are all interconnected in this community, and so when we have these partnerships, we have to make sure that we're aligned on the same issues. Yeah. Sorry. Okay, I'm going to end my, my response there.
Thank you. Cameron.
That is why I'm running for county supervisor. Let me tell you, when I was in the fifth grade, I used to take my little red radio wagon and pick up bottles and get two cents for every bottle that I recycle, and boy, that allowed me to buy chocolate. I recently went to the San Mateo Recycling Center with my bottles and cans, and they refused to give me any money. I said, I want to recycle this. They said, well, you can dump them in the thing, but the money you put forth, we're not giving it to you. I said, okay, well, here, take all my plastic bags. He said, no, that goes right to the landfill, we don't take plastic bags. I said, wait a minute, you don't take plastic bags, you won't pay me for my recycling, what's going on here? They said, you know something, you don't like it? Talk to the county supervisors. I went, there is the perfect reason I want to be a county supervisor. Where does the tail wag the dog? That's ridiculous. I think we've forgotten that the county supervisors are to supervise. And when we see the recycling people that are doing that and saying, no, we're not going to pay you anymore, and I got a nineteen eighty-five Volvo wagon full of cans and bottles already, so I can make my thirty-five, you know, thirty dollars something in recycling. I, I thought, this is ridiculous, and when I've got all these plastic bags, they go, no, we don't recycle plastic bags, landfill. I go, no, I'm not putting this in the landfill. I now have a trunk full of plastic bags I don't know what to do with, they won't take it. I have a lot of clothes that can't be used for any purpose. They, they can't be reworn. They said, put it in the landfill. I said, this is ridiculous, you have to shred this up and make attic insulation or something, nope, landfill. That's just one of the many things that the county supervisors are responsible for, that I think they've totally dropped the ball that I want to bring back. I think electric vehicles for all the county people, I think that's a start. But that's, that's, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta do recycling at the very, very basic level.
Thanks, Cameron. Charles.
Thanks so much. So with all due respect to Cameron, the Board of Supervisors doesn't actually oversee the, the MRF, the Manufacture Recycling Facilities, rethink waste contracts with the folks who do that, and that's a multi-city jurisdictional body. You're in San Mateo, so you'd be part of that as well. You know, the, the county can lead the way quite a bit, and has in the past. Things like the plastic bag ban, which were remarkably successful right up until the pandemic, when it became all of a sudden impossible to do it because everyone thought we were going to get COVID if you brought a bag from home. And now that we're going back the other way, it looks like people are starting to get the message again, but we do still see those plastic bags. But don't worry, Cameron, if you take them back to Safeway, they will take them back and recycle them for you, they don't have to go into the landfill. You know, here in Belmont, we just recently passed reach codes, which are going to be dramatically impactful. We need to move away from gas-powered homes, and the county created a template, I'm sorry, PCE created a template for that. I want to see the county do more things like that through the Office of Sustainability and in other areas. As a city council member, I can tell you, and anyone you know who's a council member, ask them to fact-check me, all of our local cities are run by folks who are overworked and underpaid. When the county can step in and create template legislation and do that backend work for us, it's one of the most impactful things that they can do. I'll be pushing to do that where we could. I, I think that Dave Pine has done some really impactful and tremendous work in helping to create Peninsula Clean Energy and on flood and sea level rise. And I want to, if elected, work with him for the last two years of his term, and then continue the work that he and Carol Groom began in terms of, of trying to make us a more sustainable county and, and a more environmentally thoughtful county. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia. Your question, and then Cameron, you will be first up.
Joanne. The San Mateo Foster City Education Foundation was founded in nineteen eighty-nine in response to growing disparity in equity and opportunity within our San Mateo Foster City School District. Since then, the San Mateo Foster City Education Foundation has continued its mission to identify unmet needs within the district and close the disparity gap so that all schools in our district may excel as a district. I want to thank all the grantors and the generous community and nonprofit partnerships that have allowed the San Mateo Foster City Education Foundation to gift over five million dollars to the San Mateo Foster City School District in support of arts, literacy, STEM education, and after-school athletics. My question is in two parts. Education is often linked to the quality of one's life as it creates opportunities of acquiring knowledge, advanced problem-solving skills, and personal development. At the Ed Foundation, we believe every child deserves the best education possible. We appreciate Thrive and Foster City Chamber of Commerce for continuing the working to create connections amongst nonprofits and partners in our community. As we cannot fulfill our mission without the support of others, such as those on this call, we are, what are your thoughts on public and private partnerships to accelerate or improve educational services to the community? And what are examples of how you have successfully brought public and private together to solve public issues? Furthermore, how do you, as a supervisor, help to maximize the efficiency of the existing nonprofit organizations and the organizations that bring nonprofits together to improve the outcomes in our community? Thank you.
You know, I wasn't fond of education until the sixth grade. I had a fantastic instructor who taught me to pursue the things that I enjoyed, and that gave me a joy of learning. You know, there are so many people in the elementary schools and junior high school and high school, and they're interested in, in veterinarian science, or they're interested in, in certain, I was mentioning things that, that are outside of the school, the extracurricular that you were mentioning, that learning is enjoyable if you give them the information. You know, the San Mateo County Supervisors have everything from the animal shelter to AMR ambulance, to county fire, to law enforcement, to parks. If you want to be a, a botanist or a horticulturist or, or someone, we have the county park system. And they don't have an educational mentoring system. I think after, you know, you're, you're going through school, let's give the children something enjoyable. The first job you have is very difficult. Let's put them into a county program, mentor them with county employees, the park system, the court system, the district attorney, fire protection, athletics, we have a golf course. I think the county should open this up, start a program so that after school, the students have something to do that's tailored to their individual needs and wants and interests. That'll give them a new impetus to learn, to study, to find things out. And you're going to couple that with a grade point average. You want to continue work at the animal shelter? I want to see a, a higher level of, of scholastic achievement on the basic classes. I think that's something the county can do. Go to each of the county agencies and departments and tell them, we're going to start a mentoring program, we're going to bring students in, in the junior high school and high school level. This is going to spurn their interest in a lot of things.
Thank you. Charles.
Thanks so much. So this is a question that's near and dear to my heart because I got involved with public speaking and educational advocacy early on in Belmont and joined our, our nonprofit Education Foundation Board. And then as a council member, having that perspective, I've been able to take advantage of synergies. For instance, almost every major developer, starting with Crystal Springs Upland School, that has come through Belmont to do business with Belmont, has made a really meaningful and significant contribution to our education foundation. Crystal Springs gave over one million dollars, the balloon payment just came a couple of weeks ago. We were very excited. You know, that's the sort of thing that I would bring to relationships like that if I were elected to the Board of Supervisors. Often, the most impactful things happen kind of because you know somebody, because you have a relationship with somebody. The San Mateo Foster City School Education Foundation is growing rapidly, and I'm really happy to see that. But if elected supervisor, trust that I'll be knocking on your door and offering you ideas quite frequently because I want to see you have the same kind of success that we've had solving our two-city issues in Belmont and Redwood Shores and growing an education foundation that when I moved here in two thousand and four was raising about three hundred thousand dollars a year and now raises three million dollars a year with only seven schools. You know, the, the short answer to this is the county already does a ton of work in this space. First Five, the big lift. We need to strengthen those programs, find more of them. And just real quick, before I run out of time, I did want to let you know, Cameron, that the county has Junior Rangers, the Fire Explorers, internship programs, and summer positions for college kids. So trust me, there, there are opportunities like that, don't worry. Thanks very much.
And Noelia.
Thank you. You know, being that this is an education foundation in, in my school district, I, I'm very familiar with the work. I will say that I have tended to be more on the side of being directly close to the needs. So I'll give you an example, I, I founded our Sanctuary Task Force in our school district, which has partnered with our Ed Foundation to, you know, put out the need in the community and meet the need of sending our lower-income students to outdoor education, for example. There, that's just one example of the partnerships that we've had. But I will say that I think it's really important that we partner with businesses. We have in the past Comcast Cares has come out to our schools and, and not remodeled, but like done a beauty, a beautification project at one of our middle schools, we've had Windy Hills. We, we have some of those partnerships. I think to strengthen those partnerships, we really need to make sure that we are delivering that, the, the, the data, the, the the compelling message to, to increase the, the financial support that we're getting. That is happening in partnership with our Education Foundation. And our school district is going through a strategic planning process, which will only better improve our ability to increase those partnerships. And I will say, you know, in terms of the nonprofit organizations and improving the outcomes in our community, we have to work together, we have to be strategic. And, and we have to have direct lines of communication open. And I'm really committed to that and will continue to be committed to that. And, you know, I mentioned our Sanctuary Task Force. Our Sanctuary Task Force has been partnering with our county services as well.
Thanks so much. We're going to be moving to our last question that will be coming from Roseanne. And after that discussion, each of you will then have one minute for closing comments, and I will close this out. So we're running just a little bit late, but hang tight. So Roseanne, your question, please, and Charles, you are first to answer this one.
Thanks so much, Joanne. So it's a two-part question.
Thanks so much, Joanne. So it's a two-part question and I will post it in the chat. The first part is, what is your number one reason as to why you want to be our next San Mateo County District Two Supervisor? Second part is, why are you uniquely qualified to serve in this role?
That, that was what my closing was gonna be. Okay, that's a great question. So I, uh, what is my number one reason for wanting to do this? This is my home, always has been my home, always will be my home. It's given me and my family remarkable opportunities. And I want to make sure that it continues to give the same sorts of opportunities socio-economically homogeneous. I want to see this be a vibrant and diverse place in every meaning of those words. I want to see a ton of affordable housing built. I want to see our decay infrastructure improved. I want to see us combat wild. Okay, sorry, bad internet connection. I want to make sure we have equity in public education, in public safety, and in everything that we touch. Uh, second part of the question was, why am I the person for this job if I heard correctly? Okay, I will take advantage of that. I'm turning off my video to see if that helps. Can you guys hear me okay now? Okay, great. I apologize. I, I'm at home today, working from home, and my internet connection isn't as good as it is at the office. I wouldn't be running for this job if I didn't think I was the most qualified candidate to hold it. For eight and a half years, I've led not only at a city level, but at a county level on regional boards and committees. And I've touched all the major areas that the Board of Supervisors touch. Budgeting, public transit, land use, public safety, fire safety. I helped lead the effort to consolidate San Mateo Foster City in Belmont into one very robust, very modern and very resilient fire department that's to a benefit to all three of our cities, for instance. In touching all of these things, I've learned the skills that you need to succeed on a body like the Board of Supervisors. I've had to learn that the way to do business is to build bridges rather than burn them. Even when you disagree with somebody, they may be your closest ally and friend tomorrow on an incredibly important issue. I want to bring those skills and qualifications to the Board of Supervisors for the betterment of San Mateo County.
Thank you, Charles. Um, next up, Noelia.
Thank you. This is a, a really good question. Um, you know, I decided to run for the Board of Supervisors because I believe that our community deserves a choice when it comes to electing their representation. I don't think anyone should walk into a seat as important as this one. My experiences the past two, three years have really lit a fire under me in terms of making sure that we have the kind of representation and the, and the supervisor, supervisor that will have the political will to represent the most urgent issues in our community, in a way that is in line with our community. I believe in transparency. I believe in collaboration. I believe in making sure that every person has what they need to fulfill, um, you know, their life's mission. And so that means that we have to live our values and elect folks that represent our community, not just in terms of race or ethnicity or gender, but in terms of a diversity of thought. That is something that I bring that no one else on our Board of Supervisors has. As a young per, as a younger person, as a, a single mom, as someone who has worked in nonprofits directly serving the community, as a board trustee, I know what it means to put children first and I know what it looks like when you try to connect people with our county safety net services and there are struggles there. That is something that is deeply needed on our Board of Supervisors and that does not exist. Everything else can be learned and will be learned, but we need representation that truly is in line with our community values. And that's what I would bring to the Board of Supervisors.
Thanks so much. Cameron.
I think Charlie is absolutely right. Charles, this is our closing. They asked us why we're doing this. This is the reason we're doing this. I, uh, I have a, a lot, I talked to a lot of people and I say, why don't you take public transportation? And they say it's, they're scared, it's, they're afraid, it's dirty, they don't like the people who are on there. Don't forget for a second that the, the Board of Supervisors' responsibility, the prime directive, is to supervise, to supervise the transportation, to supervise things. And, and I'm going through my wallet and I find things like, I ride the bus pretty regularly. I take the train pretty regularly. I've got my little senior Clipper card here. I use it all the time to get to the airport or to get to a ballgame or to a basketball game. And I know what this, what the buses, uh, and the trains need. And I know that Charles Stone is on the board of that. He's doing a very, very good job of that. But I'm also realizing, what do we supervise? We also supervise the harbors. Don't forget that that's an integral part of, of, of the county. People don't realize what the county supervisors do. I've got a, a boater's, uh, uh, license. I've, I've got a pilot's license. I, I deal personally with all of these county entities, the airports, the, the harbor district, the transportation. And that's why I want to be your supervisor, to go back and make sure that you're getting the best ambulance service, you're getting the best, uh, waste reduction, uh, recycling program. You're getting those things. The prime directive of a supervisor is to supervise the departments of the county. You know, some things are underutilized, some things are understaffed, our animal control officers are understaffed. I think the supervisors should look into every individual thing that they're supposed to supervise. That's their responsibility. I hope that's my responsibility for you.
Thank you all. And now since Roseanne's question really was part of your closing comments, we're gonna go ahead and ask you to limit your final remarks to one minute. Um, and so with that, um, uh, it looks like Noelia, you are starting us off, please.
Thank you. So I'm gonna just, um, respond to some, a point that I didn't get to earlier around climate change. One of the biggest things that I think we forget about when talking about climate change is making sure that everyone is involved in that effort. Folks that are most directly impacted by wildfires, by sea level rise are usually low-income people of color who do not have a voice in terms of what their needs are in really aligning themselves with the climate, with combating climate change. You know, we talked, uh, Charles talked about reach codes earlier. Not all of our county has, uh, electricity all of the time. We have families on the coast side who don't have consistent electricity and that is in our county. We need to remember that those people are a part of our community and we need to serve them. And I will just add that, um, you know, I am doing this because I want my son to have a better, uh, a better life outcome than the one that I've had. And we deserve, every child deserves that in our community. Every person deserves that in our community. And folks that are directly impacted by the most issue, urgent issues in our community deserve to have self-determination in the issues that impact them and in the solutions that we offer them. So, thank you for the time. I really appreciate the space and hearing from everyone here.
Cameron.
You know, I was, I was thinking, what can the county provide and what can, what can the county do? And I was, two things came up to mind is Charles is having a horrible internet connection. And I realized what a wonderful technology we have here, Zoom, Zoom calls. Some of the kids in our community don't have that. In fact, they don't even have an internet connection of any value. Who can afford a $200 a month internet connection? You know, the city of San Carlos has free internet for everybody? Why don't we have free internet for everybody on a county level? I think that should really assist some of the people on the coastal side, people that don't have that. If San Carlos can do it for their city, I think we can do it pretty much countywide. Free internet, San Carlos has it. Let's do that. Let's put that together. Affordable housing. Do you realize that affordable housing is only 10% of the requirement of the homes that are built? That means if you build 100 homes, you only have to build 10 studio apartments for affordable housing. Let's keep that in mind. Supervisors are there to supervise the county agencies. That's my responsibility and my dedication to you.
Thanks, Cameron. And Charles, you want to try to take yourself off video for final remarks?
I'll give it a shot. Just let me know if it goes sideways and I need to go dark again. So thanks very much again to the Chamber Cares and the, um, everyone on this call, wonderful group of people, and I appreciate this opportunity. Um, I want to know, just so that people understand, the county is all already doing the work with regard to internet access with, and with using the library system, Wi-Fi repeaters and Pascadero. Um, and that, uh, the, the county supervisors actually get into quite a bit of trouble if they try to supervise the department heads because as it's the county manager and the county board of supervisors hires that county manager. Um, in my 20 seconds remaining, I'll just tell you, I feel a deep sense of obligation to this county that's given my family so much, my mother, my quality of life. I want to make sure every child possible has that same opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And thank you all. We have had a wonderful, wonderful time learning a little bit more about each of you. One of the things in my closing that I would like to say is that over the course of the last two and a half years, one thing has been, made quite clear, we are all essential. Um, and that together, the relationships that we create can create opportunities and solve just about any challenge. This is a phenomenal county and together we've proven, proven that we've been able to do things that, quite frankly, I'm not sure that anyone really thought we could. So we wish you nothing but success on your road to election. We urge any and all of you to get out, learn more about each of these candidates, make your issues and the opportunities known. Remember that the primary is very important this year and that one thing is clear. We learn that community is our business and that your chamber cares. So thanks for joining us. Thank you, Thrive, for allowing us to be your co-host today in this opportunity. And we wish all of you a very, very good afternoon.
Panelists can hop on the debrief if they're interested. We're going to end the Zoom.
Did you send out a link for that?
Looking for it. I don't see it. Uh, oh, yep. 3:39.
Okay, jump onto that.
You sent out a link for the debrief?
Just came.
Yeah, I know.
It just came right this second.
Hey, Mara.
Yeah.
Uh, did you receive the calendar invite?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, awesome.
I don't.
Yeah, went, went to Bard, it went to my junk mail. So maybe it, maybe it's in your junk mail.
Okay, I will check.
It came through at 3:39.
No, no, no.
You don't see anything?
There it is.
Got it. All right. See you guys in a sec.
Eleanor and Marley, did you receive? You're on mute, um, if you're speaking. Both of you are on mute.
I, I haven't received it yet. Uh, whoops, there it is now. It's right there. Okay, so I'll log off and log back on. Yes?
Yes. Marley? Okay, I'll see you there. Bye-bye.